Good evening. My name is Jeff Greenfield. I'd like to welcome everyone on behalf of the Mayor and City Council to the 2018-2020 swearing-in ceremony for the Mayor, City Council, and School Board. Please rise if you are able. Reverend David Bonney, my next-door neighbor, please, from Fairfax United Methodist Church, will lead us in the invocation. Reverend?
Let us pray. God of all people, known to humankind throughout the world by many signs and wonders, we pause our spirits at the start of this ceremony to invoke your blessings upon these elected leaders of our beloved city of Fairfax. Continue to cultivate the best from Mayor Meyer, the City Council, and the School Board, so they may lead with steady purpose of mind with the grandest principles that bring diverse people together to champion the common good for our city. We are also thankful for the civil workers who serve, for those who teach, guard, protect, rescue, defend, and those who faithfully carry out the important duties that keep Fairfax operational. We express our gratitude. God, we also pray for the hurts and divisions in our nation. We want our prayer to have action on our part, so may our responsibility be more than being a city known for its efficiency but also known for how we care for each other as neighbors. We remember holy words that remind us that to be great means to serve, so help us to be great in this way. This we pray with the heart of all our faith stories and traditions. Amen.
Please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the City Fairfax Police and Fire Joint Honor Guard, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 470, and the National Anthem sung by Charlie McNell.
... of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, toss that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Please welcome to the podium the Honorable Gerald Connolly, Congressman for the United States House of Representatives, to throw out a few remarks.
Good evening. What a beautiful night to celebrate one of the oldest institutions in America, local government. We're celebrating the 242nd year of the republic, but local government goes back almost 150 years beyond that, when communities came together in town hall meetings, in churches, in city or town buildings, in someone's basement, to argue and debate and resolve issues of local importance. And local government, the men and women who serve local government, who are willing to give their time to their community, in my opinion, is the most noble level of government. The accountability is absolute. We know whether the pothole got filled or didn't. We know if the grass in the median got cut or it didn't. We know if the schools are performing or they're not. We know if the crime rate is up or it's down, and we know where you live. That's called absolute accountability. We need more of it in our government. But local government shapes our lives. It's where we live, it's where we work, it's how we commute, it's how our kids get educated, it's our public servants who respond to us in need, especially in public safety. We rely on all of that and sometimes take it for granted, but it's the men and women willing to serve, we're about to be sworn in tonight, who make all that happen. And for that, I'm grateful, and I hope you are too, because it makes for a quality of life that's the envy of the United States, and Fairfax City is a wonderful model of how local government can and does work. So thank you for being, your willingness to serve, and thank you to all of you for being here tonight. God bless.
I would like to introduce Rick Harrington, Secretary of the Electoral Board, to present the certificates of election.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rick Harrington, the Secretary of the Electoral Board. And we've had an election, and we're going to have more elections. We're in a country where we can actually have elections. Makes us kind of unique. And so you need to remember that it's you, as the citizens, decide who will sit on this stage. On behalf of the Electoral Board, the General Registrar, the Director of Elections, and the Officers of Election that oversaw the election on the 1st of May, you can have confidence that every qualified voter, their votes were accurately counted, they were accurately assessed, and we certify that this election is your election, and the people on this stage are your representatives. Mr. Mayor. To all whom these presents shall come greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Fairfax held on May 3rd, 2018, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the General Registrar, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1, 2018, Dave L. Meyer was duly elected mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I would like to call forward City Clerk Melanie Crowder to administer the oath of office to Mayor Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, please repeat after me. I, David L. Meyer...
I, David L. Meyer...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And perform all of the duties incumbent upon me...
And perform all of the duties incumbent upon me...
As mayor of the City of Fairfax, Virginia...
As mayor of the City of Fairfax, Virginia...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities...
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, Mr. Greenfield, Reverend Bonney, our Honor Guard, Mrs. Crowder, and Mr. Harrington, and the Girl Scouts. Welcome, fellow citizens, to our great city and our special guests. On behalf of my colleagues on the City Council and our City School Board, I express our collective appreciation to everyone who helped make this evening possible. My particular thanks go to my travel buddies in the band for being here. One year ago, I went with the band to Normandy, and we created a special bond that still endures. Also want to welcome our special guests this evening. Congressman Connolly, we appreciate your presence, your comments, and your service to the people of the 11th District of Virginia and to the nation. Thank you. Senator Peterson, all of us on the City Council and the citizens of the city appreciate you representing us in the General Assembly. Mr. Sebelia, thank you for your presence as our constitutional officer and your services treasurer. This is an exciting time for our newly-elected or newly-re-elected City Council and School Board. This evening is also a bit bittersweet. Today, our community says farewell and thank you to Jeff Greenfield and Ellie Schmidt for their many years of service to our city. I will ask that Mr. Greenfield and Ms. Schmidt please stand. Today, we also say farewell and thank you to Robert Sisson, our city manager, for the last 27 years. Today was his last day in office in City Hall. Actually, this afternoon, he told me he was coming in tomorrow morning, but he doesn't know that we're going to change the locks on him. In the world of public administration and the profession of city managers in particular, it is not often that one person has such staying power and such an impact on a community. We have been fortunate indeed, and thank you for your servant leadership over three decades. Mr. Sisson, I am not sure where you are. Would you please stand? Is he playing hooky? Well, let the record state that we did recognize him for his service. To Mr. Greenfield, Ms. Schmidt, and Mr. Sisson, we say, "Well done, good and faithful servants." This evening, we also welcome two newly-elected leaders, Sang Yi and So Lim. Today, in 2016, nearly 27% of all the persons residing in our city were born in another country. This is more than twice the national average, and it is a profound statistic. And tonight, on our City Council, that percentage is 33%. I congratulate both of you, and I, along with your colleagues on the City Council, look forward to working with you. This evening, we begin with renewed commitment, the task of community building. You have heard me say before that the City of Fairfax is a distinctive example of what is best in self-governance in our democratic system. Now, I say this without hubris or naivete, but with excitement and enthusiasm about the possibilities before us. In assessing our strengths, we have much to leverage as we move forward. Our financial position is the strongest it has ever been since our founding as a city 57 years ago. We have a tax base of $6 billion in just six square miles, a AAA bond rating, diverse sources of revenue, a low debt ratio to overall expenditures, and the lowest overall tax burden of any jurisdiction in northern Virginia. Our public infrastructure is solid to quite good. Our schools, our police station, our City Hall, and the Sherwood Center serve our community well. With the construction of a new Fire Station 33 that will begin in 2019, we will help our firefighters have the best-in-class facilities. However, our parks, our trails, and our historic properties will need attention in the near term. The Council and I look forward to working with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Historic Fairfax, Inc., and other citizens to discern the best path forward. In addition, our property yard merits an evaluation and possible capital investment in the next few years. However, our greatest asset is our human capital. We are fortunate to have a dedicated, professional, and forward-focused group of city employees who are imbued with a service excellence ethic. We need to continue to invest in our employees, providing them with competitive compensation, training, and career development opportunities, as well as equipment that keeps them safe and healthy each and every day on the job all the time. Our human capital assets also extend to our community and its leaders. We have over 100 citizens who volunteer on our boards and commissions. Additionally, scores of citizens contribute their time, their talents, and resources to civic associations, HOAs, scout groups, youth recreation programs, fraternal organizations, and church congregations. This commitment forms the fundamental building blocks of our community. Now, notwithstanding all of these assets, we do face some significant headwinds as a city. The economic life of our city and our region and of our nation is experiencing fundamental and permanent change. We have become a point-and-click, we have all become point-and-click consumers. This phenomenon has already created seismic changes. The nature of our commercial centers and retail activities in particular will continue to evolve. I'm not saying that retail and commercial in general will disappear altogether, certainly not. However, as we plan and attempt to define our preferred future, we need to recognize and adapt to these new realities. We have five commercial centers in our city, and much of this physical infrastructure was built between 1955 and 1980. The reality is, with few exceptions, private capital will only invest in redevelopment if that development includes a residential component. Now, this leads us to an existential question. What do we want to look like in 2040, 2050, and beyond? How many people should live here? This new reality calls us to create clarity of vision to attract the private investment that will strengthen our tax base and generate new sources of revenue. This is critical if we are to maintain the quality of living we all enjoy and are so thankful for. Today, I set a goal to increase our tax base over the next five years by $500 million, based on new investment and $1 billion in the next decade. This is a prudent, conservative, yet challenging goal. And the fundamental question in all of this is one of balance. Good schools for our children, neighborhoods with no violent crime, accessible parks and trails, and a healthy environment are just some of the touchstones that allow us to have deep connections that occur between us as citizens. Now, we have the opportunity to bequeath to the next generation a city that is diverse, economically vibrant, close-knit, while being first-in-class regionally, and with an impact that is national, if not global. This challenge is legacy work. Much of what we do in the next few years may not reap benefits for another generation, just as what was done in 1961 is in many ways only now beginning to reveal its true value. There will be different views as to the best path forward. This is good. None of us has a proprietary claim on our preferred future. However, I am confident that we have a quality of civic understanding and a unity of purpose that will provide a sure foundation as we embrace our future. Paul Simon, in his tune, in his song, "American Tune," wrote, "We come on a ship, they call the Mayflower; we come on a ship that sailed the moon; we come in the age's most uncertain hour and sing an American tune." But it's all right, it's all right, we have lived so well so long. I believe that we can continue to live not only well, but thrive in the years ahead. But we have to be intentional. Tonight, I extend an invitation. Come and be part of this new future. Let's roll up our sleeves together and do the hard but always rewarding work of self-governance. Let's set the standard for the region, for our Commonwealth, and for the nation. And remember, our best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Meyer. I would ask Rick Harrington to come forward again to present the certificates of election to the City Council. Council members, please come forward to receive your certificate of election as your name is called. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, So P. Lim was duly elected to the City Council. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Sang H. Yi was duly elected to the City Council. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Jennifer E. Passy was duly elected to the City Council. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, John R. Staley Jr. was duly elected to the City Council. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Janice B. Miller was duly elected to the City Council. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Michael J. DiMarco was duly elected to the City Council. Council members, please remain standing as I call on the City Clerk to administer your oath of office.
Yeah, if you want to sort of, I don't want to block the people, but that's good. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Jonathan DiMarco.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And perform all of the duties incumbent upon me...
And perform all of the duties incumbent upon me...
As a member of the City Council for the City of Fairfax, Virginia...
As a member of the City Council for the City of Fairfax, Virginia...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And now, we are going to enjoy "America the Beautiful," performed by our outstanding city band. As we get ready to recognize our school board members, I want to take just a moment to also recognize two county school board members who are here this evening, Ilia Moon and Karen Tees Gabor.[1069.23][1069.23][applause] Nice to have you here this evening. I would ask Rick Harrington to come back forward again to present the certificates of election to the school board. School board members, please come forward to receive your certificate of election as your name is called. It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Robert M. Reinsel was duly elected to the school board.[1094.78][1094.78][applause] It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Mitch A. Sutterfield was duly elected to the school board.[1114.08][1114.08][applause] It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Tobin M. Sorensen was duly elected to the school board.[1131.33][1131.33][applause] It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, John A. Buttram was duly elected to the school board.[1147.28][1147.28][applause] It was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Carolyn S. Pitches was duly elected to the school board.[1164.83][1164.83][applause] Members of the school board, please remain standing as I call on Fairfax County Circuit Court Chief Deputy Clerk Gerard Culliver to come forward and administer the oath of office.
Good evening. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board for the City of Fairfax, Virginia.
As a member of the school board for the City of Fairfax, Virginia.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I would like to call on the current chair of the school board to come forward and present a few remarks, John Buttram.[1261.65][1261.65][applause]
Thank you very much. You may be looking at your brochures, your pamphlet this afternoon, and saying that, yes, I am not Carolyn Pitches.[1277.75][1277.75][laughter] And I'm also keenly aware that I am probably just about the only thing between you and refreshments, so let's get going. To my colleagues on the school board, mayor, city council, city and school board staffs, honored guests, family, friends, and neighbors, it is a beautiful night. Thank you so much for coming out this evening and joining us for this moment to celebrate and pleasure ourselves once again to the city. I have three quick points tonight, all of which you already know, but they bear repeating. Our schools are wonderful centers of first-class education and exceptional venues for community use and enjoyment. Our students, parents, school staff, and school leadership continue to excel in academics, athletics, the arts, the environment, and in leadership. Our school board is humble and thankful for your trust, and remains your champion for well-balanced academic programs that continue to set high standards, offered in excellent, safe, modern, well-managed facilities. So let me quickly expand on these points. All your study schools are fully accredited based on meeting Virginia's Standards of Learning, the SOLs. Providence Elementary School STEM Lab and Daniels Run Elementary School Innovation Space continue to offer unique experiences for our students to deepen their understanding of math, science, and technology. Also, Providence and Daniels Run Elementary Schools will offer Level 4 Advanced Academic Program Services this fall for students who wish to stay in their home school. Lanier Middle School will follow suit and offer AAP services this fall to rising seventh graders, and is progressing to be the middle school AAP center for the Fairfax High School Pyramid in 2019. Lanier also has added a wind turbine on school grounds and will use this to fuel new areas of scientific inquiry and project-based learning. The schools have all expanded and developed environmental education spaces, mostly in the form of outdoor spaces and classrooms. As a short list, and this is a very short list, of our students, parents, school staff, and leadership, and what they have done. They have won the 2017 Virginia National Award for the sixth and 11th times for Lanier and Daniels Run. Had their PTA named the National PTA School of Excellence. Been visited by the Virginia Secretary of Education. Been recognized as the 2018 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School. Placed second in the KidWinn National Wind Turban Competition. Produced Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, that's FCCLA, state and national winners. Produced statewide winners in the Science Olympiad, Science Fair, DECA, FCCLA, and the History Bowl. Produced district, regional, and state winners in field hockey, golf, track and field, and wrestling. You know how to get the wrestling in there, coach. And produced regional winners in the Scholastic Gold Key Art Competition, nine capi nominations, and all-state chorus, band, and orchestra. Also, Fairfax High School saw one of its graduates, Second Lieutenant Simone Askew, become the first African-American woman to lead the Corps of Cadets at West Point as their first captain. Second Lieutenant Askew was also the guest speaker at this year's Fairfax graduation. Why she missed Naval Academy, I don't know. Finally, the board and school division has recruited and welcomed a new and wonderful superintendent. Was recognized by the Virginia Municipal League, along with the City of Fairfax mayor and city council, for efforts supporting the Stairway to Success Early Childhood Education Program. Expanded the use and development of educational innovation grants to our schools. Supported the Advanced Academics Program Center at Lanier Middle School and local Level 4 at the elementary schools. Was recognized by the Virginia School Board Association for the 2017 Green School Challenge, and was featured in the May 2018 Virginia School Board Association Showcase for Success Special Edition. These are achievements we don't take lightly. But we do take -- but we do credit -- we take credit too, but we do credit our great school board staff and superintendent, and our ability to work well together. A number of years ago, I came across a quote, and the quote was this, "There's no limit what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets credit." This quote has been accredited to President Harry Truman, Hall of Fame player and coach John Wooden, Ralph Waldo Emerson, and General George C. Marshall. It's not really clear who first uttered these words, because really, no one took credit.[1571.38][1571.38][laughter] But I think they described well the ability of the school board to bring each member's individual strengths, their commitment to work together, their skills to deliberate with passion, and yet act with unity. This has been a key to our success of the school board and its modus operandi. And with your support and your trust, it will be our continued commitment to our community, our schools, and our children. Thank you, and good evening.[1601.01][1601.01][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Buttram. This evening, I'd like to thank our city band, Reverend David Bonney, pastor of Fairfax United Methodist Church, Alex Molina and Brayden Montag, Cub Scout Pack 2011, Charlie Bignell, city resident and Lanier student, Girl Scout Troop 470, City Screen 12 Crew, our City of Fairfax Police and Fire Honor Guards, our Parks and Rec Department, our Public Works Department. And there's a name missing this evening, but I know who wrote this part of the program, and so I'm going to ad lib here. There's a person in City Hall that goes above and beyond almost every day, and tonight is no exception. A very special thank you to our City Clerk, Melanie Crowder.[1658.01][1658.01][applause] And a special thanks to all of you for coming out and celebrating this peaceful election process. Please join us on the lawn for desserts and lemonade. And now, we'll continue to hear from our city band or our City of Fairfax march. Please join us on the lawn.